Okay, so it's 5:30, so we're going to call to order the regular Planning Commission meeting for today, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The land that we know as Squim was once inhabited solely by first peoples known as the Sklalem people, represented by the three tribal governments, Lower Elwaklalem, Jamestown Sklalem, and Port Gamble Sklalem. We serve as stewards of the land within the city of Squim with the same care and consideration the Sklalem tribes has and continues to provide. This acknowledgement is a respect to the Sklalem people and their history. The Planning Commission serves as an advisory body to the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide guidance and direction for Squim's future growth through continued review and improvement to Squim's comprehensive plan, zoning code, shoreline management, environmental protection, and related land use documents. The Planning Commission will have all of the powers and perform each and all of the duties specified by Chapter 35A.63 RCW as amended and set forth or amended by ordinance. So roll call, let's take roll call acknowledging that Commissioner LaFever is absent tonight on an excused absence. All right, Commissioner Coontz?
Present.
Commissioner Cummings?
Here.
Commissioner Fane? Commissioner Hewitt? And Commissioner Mahalik?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. So we are looking to approve the minutes for the regular Planning Commission meeting from May 6, 2025. At this time, I'm assuming that all of the commissioners have had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any corrections or discussion? Okay, and if not, can we get a motion and a second to approve? Thank you, do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, any opposed? Okay, minutes stand approved as written, thank you. Okay, so now we are going to move on to public comment, noting that we do not have a public hearing on any of our issues tonight, so this is the time for public comment. General public comment will be heard at this time. Each person is limited to three minutes. For those wishing to speak on the public hearing topics, please hold those comments until the portion of the meeting, which we don't have tonight. So with that, is there anybody that would like, that's in the room that would like to provide public comment at this time? Okay, is there anybody online?
There's no one online.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment part of this hearing and we will, I'm sorry, of this meeting, and we will move on, not seeing any general business, we'll move on to new business. And the first item that we have in new business is review of changes to Squim Municipal Code 2.36 and the introduction of Squim Municipal Code 2.20. So, do we have a presentation on that?
That's me, no presentation, just, I wanted to bring this back so we can finally essentially get our rules of procedure adopted. You may remember in February of 2023, you all voted to rescind the 2008 rules of procedure, and at that time, we had presented chapter, the proposed new rules of procedure as well as 236, and since that time, we have adopted Chapter 220, which is an advisory body chapter. It's kind of the skeleton for all advisory bodies, and 236 is sort of the meat and potatoes for y'all specifically. Anything that is not in 236 will be covered by 220, and we wanted to formally introduce that chapter to you today. It was adopted by council in February of this year. So the purpose of tonight is to just look over 236 one more time, make sure that I didn't miss anything in the edits we had discussed, and also the rules of procedure. So the next steps, if you propose that 236 gets adopted by a council as changed, then they will make a resolution to adopt it, and then we can finally adopt our rules of procedure. But we couldn't do the rules of procedure adoption without 236 being updated.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I will mention, because I did ask Christina about this, there is, in the one that is specific, okay, so let me back up. So recently, we have conducted interviews for a new commissioner, and we proceeded a certain way that we, that is listed as, under our Planning Commission, rules of procedures of how we should. But in the, which one is it, is it the 220?
236 is our chapter, 220 is the advisory bodies, yes.
The way that they interview, what's listed there is different, and Christina had said, and please, like, I mean, I know I'm really chopping this up, but she said that when we have specific instructions in our rules and procedures in 236, that's how we proceed, if it's specified.
That is correct, right. It is, the chapter 220 is exactly as Emily had indicated. The purpose of adopting Chapter 220 was we found that a lot of our advisory bodies and boards and commissions and whatnot, some of them, most of them, did not have any standard rules and procedures or processes or anything like that, and the liaisons to those various boards and commissions were kind of struggling with what to do with their respective boards and commissions. Most of them are not nearly as structured under law in the same way as the Planning Commission is. So the Planning Commission has that benefit of having RCW guidance and, of course, longtime City Council guidance, whereas the other boards and commissions don't necessarily have that. So the Chapter 220 was a way to kind of standardize processes across the boards and commissions to give the commission members themselves, as well as the liaisons, some structure and some stability and some certainty in terms of process. So as Emily mentioned, 220 is just a floor, right? It's the base, it's the skeleton, it's the floor. This commission has wanted to adopt its more specific rules and provisions, 2.36, and so your rules 2.36 would control, and in anywhere where your 2.36 or your bylaws, your rules of procedure were silent, then 220 comes into play.
Okay, is that clarification, Eileen, for, okay. And I did have a question, but also something, Eileen had brought something else up about the appointment or the recommendation for appointment. So would, I mean, would you mind asking that, because I think it's worth clarification if possible?
Yeah, my question was, how does it, you know, who does the official interview as well as the hiring or appointment for a new commissioner?
So I will ask Emily if that, it's my understanding that the process that has been used recently is the Planning Commission's longstanding process, and I would expect that to be identified within its rules of procedure. I will admit, I have not read your rules of procedure, because you've worked on them for so long, and I didn't feel that it was my place to come in and add my two cents. But I would presume that that would be clear in the rules of procedure. But I will say that in the new 2.36, which again is the Planning Commission's specific code, it does say, "Once applications are open, candidates are interviewed by a panel consisting of the mayor or designee, council liaison, planning commission chair, and director of community development." So it retains that panel that the commission is used to operating with.
And I think that her question was, does the entire commission make the recommendation to the City Council, or is it specific to like the chair?
What?
Because I thought that she had read, and, you know, that, and I didn't see that, so it might have been a section in the 2.20 that the entire commission makes the recommendation.
Well, let me, Emily, please feel free to jump in if you are familiar with that.
And I understand that, how we are operating right now with the appointment or recommendation that is forthcoming at some point in the future, that we are, that we have not adopted these rules, and so we are operating the way that we always have.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Which is permissible at this point, because these have not been adopted, correct?
And it's permissible, and the Planning Commission has a longstanding practice of doing so, and these rules of procedure, as I understand it, were just updated. And I don't, I don't know, Emily, or maybe even Travis, if that process has changed since the 2000, for all I know, that could have been included in the 2008 process.
Okay, and, yeah. And the process that we're currently, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, it's fine, I was just going to say is that, you know, we are, the purpose of updating the rules and the processes is to conform to our current practice, right? We're not, we're not creating new practices or doing something differently than what we've done, we're just updating the things to conform to our current practice.
Right, making sure that we're on the books for what we're, how we're, yeah.
And it's always important, right, you know, this is part of something that the city is undertaking citywide, right? Reviewing our policies, reviewing our codes to make sure that we're actually keeping up with practices, and this just happens to be one of them. You may have heard Emily, and you will hear Travis talk about that when we talk about code scrub, that's exactly what that is. It's every piece of code, it's every section, it's our associated rules and policies, is where moving towards getting everybody to review those periodically, three to five years, you know, for non-land use things, but just to ensure that we are reviewing them periodically and that they're still relevant.
Okay. Do you have any?
To circle back, though, on your question, I know that that's how council does it when they're not elected, and the whole council interviews and does all of that and recommends, but for Planning Commission, my understanding, and it wasn't in the rules of procedure from 2008 or these ones that we're trying to adopt, my understanding is that the chair brings the recommendation to y'all and then formally suggests, but, I mean, that's, I think that's what.
But would that, because it's not in, because it's not in our rules and procedures, in that instant, would we revert to the recommendation in 2.20?
Yes, and that's what I was just going to suggest. I think I found the section that you are concerned with, and it says, "Appointment decisions will generally be made after an interview process during a public meeting of the advisory body or of the City Council as set forth in any applicant statute code or city policy." So what I would suggest then is that in part of the 2.36 discussion tonight, that if the Planning Commission wants to retain its current practice, is that you direct staff to include that language in there before it gets recommended to move forward to the City Council.
Okay, Karen Mahalik, or Commissioner Mahalik, sorry.
2.20.030, she basically says the city clerk is going to screen the applications, but the advisory body will consider and conduct interviews and then make appointment recommendations to the City Council. So it is spelled out.
However, the, yes, it is spelled out, but again, the commission's practice has been to do something different, which we.
No, we have never considered the applicants.
And that's what I'm saying, is that the 2.36 says something different. The 2.36, we added language that refers to the Planning Commission's current practice. So if you look at 2.36.010, the last sentence in A, "Once applications are open, candidates are interviewed by a panel consisting of the mayor or designee, council liaison, planning commission chair, and director of community development." So that would supersede what you read in 220.
That's the advisory body. Maybe what we need is a definition of the committee, that's the advisory body doing the interview, because that is the same body that has always conducted the interviews. That has been done for 10 years.
That sounds consistent with what I recall, too. So, yeah, I think Karen's right.
So I would, what I would say is that I suspect the advisory bodies in 2.20 was not intended to include subcommittees. What you're describing is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission.
I'm describing the interview committee that in that paragraph.
Right, made of.
The interview committee being the advisory body that recommends the applicant, and the question came up, because the advisory body recommended an applicant, and they're sending it, their question is, do they send it to us, or do they send it to the City Council?
And, and what I'm saying is, oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm understanding what you're saying now. What has been your practice before? When the panel makes a recommendation, do they bring it to the commission, or do they take it directly to the City Council?
It's always gone to the City Council.
Yeah, I don't think you guys ever voted on it.
No, okay, so then if the commission wants to keep that recommendation, I would suggest that you add, that you ask to add that language in there to make sure that that's the clear practice.
I think we did, the last time that, I think we did, like, the mayor and I did an interview, well, we did, you know, interviews on everyone, and then we decided who we were going to recommend. I came to the Planning Commission meeting, I told the commission, I did a brief overview of all of the applicants, and I said, "This is who we recommend." And maybe we need to look back, because I feel like we did vote, to send that recommendation to the City Council. I feel like we did, did we discuss it?
We discussed it, but we never voted on the applicants. That's never been.
No, but the recommendation, did we, like, if I said I.
We never voted on the recommendation.
Okay.
It's always been sent to the City Council.
Yeah, right, but didn't we vote on, like, sending the recommendation, the specific to the City Council? No?
No.
Okay, I just said, "This is who we're going to recommend."
Right, you informed, you informed the commission of what took place in the interviews.
So, so do we have any more questions? Because I feel like, feel like we're not quite clear on all of that yet. I mean, we are on sending, you know, sending it to the City Council, but as far as like who, like you said, advisory board and who.
Well, if it's not clear in, to you in the language as it's presented, then the wording, it's clear to me how it reads, but if it's not clear to the rest in the language, and Larry has a question.
Yes.
It's, I think it's clear to me that this interview panel is the one who decides, and the mayor presents that to the city. So you, as part of that interview panel, but if you were to bring it to me, I would not, I mean, I would just vote with you, because I didn't interview the person.
Right.
So it makes sense, the way it's written to me, that it would be this interview panel with the mayor, the mayor takes it to City Council, that's the way I'm reading it.
Okay. And is the rest of the commission comfortable with that as well?
Just that paragraph, A, is pretty clear that there's who the panel is, and that at the very top, it said, "Recommended by the mayor or designee to and confirmed by the City Council." So the mayor is the one actually making the recommendation based on what this panel has decided in the interview process.
Is that, is that a consensus among the commission that we're good with that language and that it's clear enough to maintain current practice? Because for what it's worth, that's how I read it as well, so.
Okay, so I did have another question about, in the meeting section, see if I can find it, I think it's in the first.
Was it 236.030?
Meetings rule?
I think so, yeah.
Hold on, not in the actual code, 236.
030, maybe?
Yeah, I believe so.
You said meeting section, yeah.
Okay, no, never mind. No, so it wasn't, so it was above in the draft, where it says, "In the meeting section." So it's section four in A, and it says, and this is the draft, it says, "In-person meetings are to be held at the public hall, council chambers, yada, yada," and then it says, "The meeting will be held in a hybrid setting using video," it says, well, at the very beginning, it says, "In-person meetings are to be held at City Hall." And then it said, "The meeting will also be held in a hybrid setting using video conference and teleconferencing." So are we limited if we need to? I mean, we're all like hoping there's not another pandemic, but are we limited, should there have something that arises to where we need to say, "Okay, we need to have virtual meetings for a while, not in person?"
I took that to mean that they're held here, but you also have the option to join remotely if you'd like, that's how, I mean, as a commissioner or as a member of the public, that's how I read that.
And that would be consistent with the changes that the state legislature made a couple of years ago after the pandemic, to be requiring hybrid options.
Okay, so we're not required, if we need to, if we need to suspend in-person and go to video conference or, you know, Zoom, that we're not required to have an in-person, is that correct?
So the way that the state managed OPMA rules during the pandemic was essentially to require a facility where people could come in. It did not mean that you commissioners would need to be here.
Okay.
You could attend remotely, but what would end up happening is that we would have to have usually the clerk or the liaison down here in case a member of the public did not have access to computers or things like that. That is, that is a growth of the Open Public Meetings Act and not necessarily something that we are seeking to impose upon the commission.
Okay, I mean, I'm here, so, okay, that's the only question I have, I'm good with everything else. How about, how about the rest of the commission? Okay, no more questions, we like the work that Emily did, and everything's pretty clear. Okay, let me get to the top of this agenda item here. What, I'm sorry. Okay, so would, are we looking to finalize the draft? Is everybody comfortable with finalizing that? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion? There is a suggested motion.
I move to direct staff to request the council finalize the draft amendments to SMC 2.36 and move to adopt the rules of procedure for the Planning Commission as presented, and direct staff to post such rules on the city's website after SMC 2.36 is adopted by the council.
Okay, all those in favor, please. Oh, sorry. I'm a little squirrely today. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And no opposed, so it passes, thank you.
Good work, Emily.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, our second item in new business is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Status Update. The evening, planning commissioners, thank you for another good, I'm thanking you in advance for another good meeting that we're going to have on the comprehensive plan. So in your packet, there's a memo that is comprehensive plan update status memo, and it's my intent to provide that to you at each of the meetings, so it can be a very short agenda item, but I do want you, I wanted to use this kind of as a forum, as to report to you things that maybe happen behind the scenes, like, and as the staff works on the comprehensive plan from between Planning Commission meeting and Planning Commission meeting, that are going to be things that aren't necessarily on the agenda, but for you to be aware of the work that's being done. And so in this, so this will be the first memo and of one of many. And so I want, there is a couple things that I wanted to just highlight for you, and then I don't plan to go, you know, through it in detail, I want to highlight a couple things and then see if there are any questions that you have on the status memo, and then we can move on to the next comprehensive plan related agenda items. And so I wanted to note, as it says there, that we are underway on comprehensive plan chapter drafting. Every chapter is underway, some in different, you know, different places of completion, but everything has a draft, has a draft chapter. And so I did include some more specific dates on page two, which is page 29 of the packet of what I am anticipating the chapter rollout to be for just the next couple months for the Planning Commission, and that would be tonight is introduction, and then June, your June 3 meeting would be community character, and then natural environment on June 17. Now, I am very certain that those are going to be delivered on those dates. The parks and open space, transportation and economic development, while they're underway, they all have other engagement that I'm doing with other bodies that may or may not affect that timeline. So those are my tentative dates that are my goals that I'm working towards. So for example, the parks and open space, I attended the Parks and Arbor Recreation, sorry, Parks Arbor, what's the R? Recreation, okay, board. I was like, oh my gosh, how can I forget that? I was just there last night. So I was there yesterday presenting some draft goals and policies for the Parks and Open Space chapter, and then at their June meeting, we'll dig deeper into it and discuss with them if there's any updates that they want to make. It's from the current Parks and Open Space plan, and the comprehensive plan can provide a bridge between their current Parks plan and their next plan, which they do every six years, and so it's not time for them to update that, but if there's new policies or some things might have changed, the comprehensive plan does give them, does give that opportunity. So we'll be discussing that with the park board, and then also later on, when we start working on the capital facility plan, which will be later this year, we'll go back to them as well. Transportation has the city engineer and his team, as well as the transportation master plan consultant team, so I actually delivered a draft chapter to them last night, and so it needs to kind of go through their review. So I'm hopeful that I can bring it to you on July 15, but again, going to hold. But again, going to hold that a little bit loosely. And then economic development, we do have, I do have a draft that we'll, we'll start working on internally. But I do want to be able to engage with other stakeholders in the community, like the, the Clough County Economic Development Council, the Dungeons Valley in Squim Chamber of Commerce to get their input on it before it becomes a public release. And so again, working towards engaging those other stakeholders and having them review it for their input and, you know, kind of specialty knowledge that they might want to share with us. And so that, so those are my goals, working towards them. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. The other piece in news, I guess I wanted to update with you is on the consultant status. I think we mentioned at the last meeting that we, Christine and I were working to secure a consultant that had worked on the Squim comprehensive plan prior as a sub to SEJ. Leland Consulting is the name of the firm and they did the land capacity analysis and the housing needs assessment. As part of their work with SEJ, we need some additional work on both of those. And so we have engaged with them to get scope of work, which we received and it's under review in fact. And the other piece that we asked them to do, Leland Consulting is a well-known and well-regarded consulting firm. They're based in Portland, but they do a lot of work in Washington. But they're very well-known to be an expert in doing economic market analysis. And so we actually asked them to bid a housing and economic market analysis specific to Squim. And so they did as part of the, part of this contract discussion and negotiation we're doing. And I get, we have, the, the city executive team has decided to move forward with that. So I was excited about that opportunity to work with Leland. And we're working on finalizing the scope of work, but it will be Squim-specific information. It will analyze our residential housing market. And in the light of the specific housing requirements that the state has mandated, you know, on the jurisdictions that we've talked about. And it will look at our economic market for employment retail and retail commercial. And then it will evaluate our development regulations and identify barriers, if there's any barriers in there to achieve what we're supposed to understate mandates and what they recommend we should for, you know, for healthy economic climate. And, and so I have worked with them on other projects and have, have a very high opinion of them. And I also know that other jurisdictions that have used them have found that their market studies have been very helpful. And so while those are going to take some time to do, I, I do want to note that like specifically the economic development chapter that even if I bring it to you this summer, we're going to still hold that loosely because there's going to be a lot of things that might be informed from it, from our economic market study. And so it's, again, it's a way to keep the comprehensive plan moving forward with the caveat that while we're going to do this study, we, we may go back and make revisions, you know, at, at the end of the year, so to speak. So with, so we're, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I talked to the, to the project manager this morning. He's very excited about coming in, working with Squim. And so, so, oh, okay. So with that, that's just, those are the things I wanted to highlight from the status report. And so, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay.
Just very quickly, as a reminder, you know, the, in talking with Carla and looking at the scope of work associated with this market analysis, it doesn't mean that the work is going to stop, as Carla said, but we are going to be better informed of the things that go into the final draft of the comprehensive plan. So we want to thank the commission again for understanding and allow us to do the Squim-specific work because it really needs to be done. And it's not something where you really have the opportunity to do that at any other time, except during the comprehensive plan process. So, you know, thank you for your, for your trust and your partnership as we move forward in this.
Thank you. I had a question. Will there be any data included in that about short-term rentals within the city limits?
Yes. I saw it in their scope today and I was like, all right, yes. So, yeah.
Okay, good, because we've been asking about, about that for a long time.
Yep. And I think that, and that's one of the things that are, I feel very positive about the study is that there's, there's narrative and there's discussion, but there's not a lot of metrics and data about it. And so I'm looking forward to finding the data and then meshing the two, the story, the experience and then what's, and the data.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. Thank you for the status update.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I felt really good reviewing that when I did. So, and everybody else feel okay with where, with the update that was just given?
I just want to thank you for this timeline. I think this is going to help me a lot to keep me focused and bring up the questions. But you've already addressed every question I was going to ask you about it. So thank you very much.
Yeah. And I like the format that you have with the status update.
Okay, great. Thank you for that feedback. I appreciate that. And this, this is for you to, and for us too, you know, for us to make sure that we're communicating and we're communicating what we're working on that may not be presented at the meeting. And also for you to see what we're doing and then ask questions about, okay, how did that go? Or what is, you know, I see that you did, worked on this. What did, what does that mean? What were the results? So it's, it's, I hope that it's helpful for both the two-way communication.
Thank you. Okay. So if we have nothing further on that, we'll move on to new business item C, which is the future land use map discussion summary notes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So we provided these minutes, or not, they're not minutes, the meeting summary that, that were prepared by Jack's our intern. And I thought he did a great job for being an intern. So he was really on the ball. So I, I, the reason we're providing them to you is to make sure that we recorded the comments correctly, that there were some consensus and I, decision points more or less in some of the areas and that we wanted to note that. And we wanted to make, make sure we got it right and to give you the opportunity, if there was anything else that came to mind that you thought of after the last planning commission meeting, so that we can kind of plug it in to these notes. Because we'll use this as our framework on taking, on moving forward with changes to the, the future land use map as well as the zoning map. And so, so that's the intent of these meeting notes. And there are two things I wanted to just add about it and then look forward to hearing your comments. One is, we didn't speak to it at the meeting. And so I just wanted to note that on the, on the new and updated zoning map that we'll be preparing as part of this process, we will be bringing, continuing to depict the manufactured home overlay that got approved in December. And so I, we didn't note that. And so I wanted to just make sure I looped back and said that that is continuing on and that will be reflected on the zoning map. And then the other thing is, is that I wanted to just share with you, and I'm going to give Travis the floor here in a minute, that we did do some research on the employment opportunity area. If you recall, we kind of talked a little bit about that being the economic opportunity areas. And what, was there any, you know, we, Travis shared that the market hasn't responded in any way to what is in the zoning code. And if there's other opportunities to amend the zoning code and not necessarily the map, that would be more responsive to market demand and needs and desires. And so I, I'll kick us off and say that the, that these are the two areas, the River Road and the Bell Creek are the two areas that have been zoned, economic opportunity areas we talked about last time. But the economic, the designated economic opportunity area is much greater for the city Squim, which we learned a little bit to our surprise, I think. That was through the, is it the Emerald Coast, the Emerald Coast by Governor Inslee. And it primarily is tax benefits. And so it, so that piece is not actually part of our world as far as land use regulations. And so not really sure where, how and where you get those tax benefits. But it's, it's not, so our zoning code and our zoning map is not tied to that. And then the other thing that we learned is that it will sunset unless renewed by, by Congress in December 31st in 2026. So those tax benefits will sunset. And so I think with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Travis. But he and I spent some time today reading the Bell Creek feasibility report that was prepared by Eric Hovey in 2018 and just trying to learn more about the establishment of these areas and if there's any constraints. The question is, is there any constraints for the planning commission to consider alternatives or, you know, different options in the zoning ordinance? So.
Yeah. So thank you. And yeah, so it, and as of now, you know, it doesn't appear we have that mechanism to utilize the tax stuff like Carla said, but we can, we can look into that a little bit more to see if, you know, the county is on top of that. And so that we at least have a more clear understanding of what needs to be done or what can be done. But yeah, so the, it's interesting because the River Road EOA zone actually doesn't even fall in the Emerald Opportunity Zone that Carla referred to. You know, when we look at it on the map, it's more or less along Washington. And then one of those zones actually isn't even included in it, for whatever reason. But anyway, the, the Hovey study was done and at the time, those zones had just been established more or less as like overlays or almost like precursory zones, similar to what we see now today with our PRC zone. So the underlying zoning was still R48 at the time. And then, so the, the report we got was a, was what is exhibit A or step A in the process for securing what could be like SERB funding or that was kind of the kickoff point. And from there, we got an economic analysis of, of the area and what could be done with it and how we could have put, could potentially apply SERB funding. And SERB funding is the Washington State's Community Economic Revitalization Board. So they provide funding for infrastructure, utility costs and things. But usually that is for projects that generate jobs. So in order to receive those funding, that, that funding, you have to be able to then go and show, all right, so we're going to do X, Y, Z and it's going to generate this number of jobs. That's why you should give us some money. And so with that in mind, the study was done and market analysis and research was done by Hovey. And there were a bunch of options laid out, like option one, two and three for what could be done with specifically the Bell Creek, or Bell Creek EOA. So that was the, the main focal point of the study was just that area in and of itself. And so there were recommendations provided for, you know, this is what could be done. And so then the next step the city took was to actually go the, take it a step farther and adopt zoning standards in line with those recommendations that would allow us to recoup fund, to recoup costs through SERB. But as Carla and I discovered today in the analysis, the, the market analysis and the recommendations aren't exactly aligned. So the, the recommendations to receive SERB funding were more in line with what we see in the zoning standards for industrial, where the things that would generate jobs necessarily. However, the market analysis was more pointed towards residential. So we do, we are kind of at this little bit of a crossroads in terms of, okay, the market is telling us this. However, we have this opportunity to receive funding if we, if we can get this kind of development to come in. So from there, the city opted to establish zoning standards that were more in line with getting funding. To, and we can look into maybe, because we, we didn't get too deep into it. That's kind of the surface level, but we can look into maybe a little bit more of the why and go back to 2018 updates to, to, to listen to those minutes, talk about it. But we just wanted to share that with you because I know we did talk about it at the last meeting, maybe trying to loosen those standards a little bit to allow for more residential, which would be consistent, it appears, with the economic analysis. But it may be at the cost of not being able to go and get SERB funding. So that's kind of our, our snapshot of that. I wish Dennis were here, but I'm sure he'll listen to the minutes because I know it was his question about how it got established. But happy to answer any questions or if there's any other information you want us to look for, then we can definitely do that. So.
Okay. I see. Eileen has a question or comment?
So this funding source, is it still available? And is there any money there or is it even worth discussing if it's not here anymore?
As Carla just whispered in my ear, SERB is still available, but sunsets in 20, is that the one that sunsets?
No, that's the opportunities.
Okay, the, okay, okay, sorry.
The tax.
So the SERB funding is still available, but to add a little bit more context to this, part of the reason why the city undertook that, the Hovey, the Hovey report was to work in conjunction with a developer. The, or I'm sorry, the owner of the property at, at that time. So the funding is still available and I want to say there's some other nuances and things like that that occurred during that time. But I don't fully trust my memory at this point. So we'll talk about that internally.
And for whatever it's worth, the owner at the time has since sold the property. So.
After we got the information back on the study, I was not involved in it. So I can't give you the reasons, but it's my understanding that the owner opted to back out of any further movement in towards getting that funding for whatever reason.
Oh, well, and so, yeah, so we did, I think briefly mention at the last meeting that we do at least have a developer who has shown interest in it. But there, and their ambition is to do a master plan overlay, which would effectively, without saying circumvent the zoning standards, would allow them to do kind of more or less what they would want to do. That would be more in line with what their vision of the market is bearing out. And they have said that this idea that a minimum of 55% commercial as a requirement for any type of development is just unrealistic for them. So we're, I do have, or I'm trying to schedule a meeting with them for the end of the month to get a better idea of where they're at with that. But this, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what they're trying to do. And I think as I shared last time, it was about 300 units in various, whether it's senior, multifamily, single family and with, with some commercial included as well, but not nearly the 55% minimum that's currently required. So, yeah. That's, that's kind of all I've got from them at this point. But they definitely have shared with us that they don't believe the market reflects what the zoning standards are currently requiring. So.
Okay, thank you. Any, any more questions or discussions on this? No? Okay. All right. Any comments or questions or additions to the meeting summary notes in general?
Alex, you missed a good one. So I, I'd love to have your input, you know, now that you're here. So.
I was, I was really appreciative to see the revised down growth estimates. And if that's how it works out in the long term, that maybe takes a lot of pressure off of transportation, water and other logistic things that we're probably going to be hard to keep pace with at 3% growth. And it's kind of interesting also the mention of commercial vacancies around town. It's just a sign of the, the times, I guess. And so that was interesting to see mentioned. I really appreciate the really, the really good notes that were there. Oh, yeah, was the high tech industrial on Washington Avenue on the east side, especially on Especially on the side, on the north side across from Black Bear. Does that stay as it is in hopes that someday that will be developed that way?
Yeah. So we're, we're going to have, we're going to have HTLI look at, we're going to have Leland Consulting as part of the economic market analysis that I was just telling you about, we're going to actually have them look specifically at HTLI and determine its continued viability as is. Does it need to be called something different? Is it something, you know, in our, in the zoning code? And then one thing that actually on the status memo, I should have also highlighted, but it is related to the HTLI is that we'll be opening the, the land use designation, redesignation application process. And that's basically your comprehensive plan amendments, map amendments of the, of, you know, the past. And we're going to be rolling that into unfolding that into this comprehensive plan process. And it is our expectation that at least a few HTLI property owners will participate in that amendment process, request process and let us know what they think that the market is or what they're interested in having their properties owned at. So, so to your question, Alex, at this point, probably something is going to happen to that. We just don't know what yet, but, but that, that will be part of the process.
And will that be publicized, that, that opening up, okay, for kind of stakeholders? Interesting, because I, I would imagine most people would like to see that the owners or interests, would like to see residential, if it's suitable.
Yeah. So we'll be, Emily's been fantastic in getting us organized and ready to launch. Our application will go live this Friday. We'll have it on our website. We'll have it in the city newsletter. We're putting an ad in the Peninsula Daily News. And then Travis will be reaching out personally to the property owners at HTLI that have made some, have, have communicated with them in the past about it, letting them know about the application process being open.
Oh, thank you. Then the only other thing that comes, oh, I guess here, is this okay? I'm sorry. I really appreciate the notes to see kind of how things are developing. Oh yeah, the, the Bell Creek Opportunity Zone. I guess I had never pictured warehousing in there. Is that like mini warehousing or major stuff? I wouldn't want to see big trucks going on there. It's, it's such a pretty, pretty place.
I don't think you're alone. So it is, it's an interesting standard. And I guess, you know, in that sense, we're thankful nothing's happened. But, but yeah, no, it's definitely, it seems, at least in my opinion, that that would have been better at the River Road. There's a lot of standards in the Bell Creek one that look like they would be more better served there. And then that the River Road ones would have been better served at the Bell Creek ones. It's almost like, I don't know if they got them backwards, but no, I think that's, that's definitely consistent with what we've heard as well. So.
Or even an upscale RV park or something with trees and stuff would be pretty. Anyway, thanks. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions on the future land use map discussion summary before we move on?
I'll just add, we have, we didn't touch on it a lot last time. But I did say we'd bring it back and that is like an MDR, right? Medium density residential. So keep thinking about that. And if you have ideas or areas that you think it would be appropriate in, feel free to, to share because that is something that we've talked about. But since it doesn't exist currently, we haven't really touched on it much. So, but just keep it in the back of your mind because we don't want to lose that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
And then I'm in accord with the, the height restriction, the, the, the conservative lifting of it to like 38 feet in some places and the other. That it seemed like a, a good, a good compromise and a way to get more in. And was I seeing that in some places like R4 through eight was going to be four through nine? Or did I misinterpret that? Or sometimes, some situations it would be. Okay.
No, that's a, that was a good question. So staff did propose the, the opportunity to increase the density slightly to the low, the low density residential land use, which is R48 on the zoning map. And we recommend, we, well, I don't even know if it was recommendation. We suggested moving it up one additional unit to R49 and the commission did agree.
Yeah. And that was, and that was consistent because we were also looking at upping our short plat requirement or minimum, or I guess maximum from four to nine units so that you could get a short plat with nine units as opposed to just four. So then someone could come in and apply for effectively a short plat in the R48 with a little bit less land. So.
Okay. So, so smaller parcels, it's not necessarily for height or two stories or like a duplex, two stories, but smaller parcels.
Could be, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's something else on that, we'll move on to item D, which is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Introduction Chapter. So here we go. Okay. Your first chapter. So this is, this will be the first chapter of the comprehensive plan. You had seen it before, but we didn't get really too much in detail. So at, at this point, it's mostly, I'm going to turn, turn it back to you, Julianne, because you will be able to entertain questions or comments. I do recommend that we kind of go page by page. So starting on page one and then going to page two. This is, but I would, you know, obviously it's at the pleasure of the commission on how you'd like to review this chapter.
Okay. Well, we can go page by page. And so the first one in our agenda packet, chapter one, introduction and vision. This first page is, it's showing us page three of 11 or page 41 of 49 in our agenda packet. Correct? Okay. All right. Does anybody have any input on this? I personally liked it and thought that it hit all of our, all of our needs and likes and, and it encompassed our, our comments. Yeah, good. Okay. So we'll move on to page two. How about this one? Yes, Larry?
I am all for support of local business, but I think to call that out as opposed to support business, we have a lot of, a lot of larger companies that are employers within this area. So I, I think we could remove the bolded local from that and say we're a business friendly community because we certainly have the big boxes. Our, our grocers are not local. I think we support all business is kind of where I would like to see us consider going, perhaps than just local business. And I know that's a political football, right?
Okay.
Both.
Yeah.
Healthy.
Yeah. And I think the, the statement fosters thriving business environment that retains small businesses, attracts larger employers and encourages innovation is good. But yeah, maybe we change that to, you know, the bold from, what was your suggestion? Support local businesses to? Okay, or support the business. Yeah. Okay. I was going to go way into the weeds, but something all inclusive?
Do you feel like we maybe deleting the small business, the small, the word small in just say that retains businesses, attracts larger employers and encourages?
I think small businesses are the backbone of, of small communities. But I think we also have to recognize, as I said, we've got some, some big box employers here. The financial institutions are big financial institutions. So I think we just, you know, we just recognize that, that we're supporting business. And I think that's what I heard out of our discussions with the community. They want a support of business, not one over the other. And calling out small businesses is fine because we're saying we'll also attract larger businesses too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. And I mean, I have to agree because I, I work for a big box retailer who is very invested in the community as far as being good stewards. You know? Okay. Anything else on that page? Okay. So let's move on to the next one with the explanation of the GMA, which I, I will say that I, I appreciate this, this section of this page and part of the next page. Because I think that the, a good explanation of the Growth Management Act will go a long way as far as the public understanding how the comprehensive plan is structured. And I think that in a time where sometimes information is, certain things are picked from this and certain things are picked from this and put together and presented as the whole picture, when clearly there are sometimes pretty big factors such as the Growth Management Act that if not mentioned, you would really kind of miss the importance of, of that in the document. So I like that. I think it's, I think it's great, especially for somebody that's not coming from a planning background or even knows the term Growth Management Act or GMA. I mean, I could see somebody being like, what the, what is that? What the heck is that? And I did go back and compare it to the current comprehensive plan. And I think that it's definitely more, more encompassing. Any, anyone else on that page? No? Okay. How about the next page, which has a bunch of bullet points? Yes.
I'll just comment that I think it kind of, this whole description, like we're not in this by ourselves on the peninsula. We're working with our neighbors and trying to achieve coordinated regional planning efforts. I mean, that's a big deal. It's not easy, but that it's nicely stated there. And, and it talks about the public engagement and everybody's part in this project. So I, I thought that was really well done and the GMA. Yeah, that's a big thing. And I would guess a lot of people have never heard of it. So.
I did have one thing and I don't know. So looking at the current comprehensive plan and it's on page seven, and I know we don't have that right in front of us. But there is a section that is highlighted. And it says, with this vision, the community desires that. And it goes through some of the things that the community has requested. I think it, I think that it might be, I mean, well, I guess what I should say is I would appreciate having a section with some bullet points of what the community offered during this revision, if that makes sense. Because it says, with this vision, the community desires that, number one, growth will occur mostly within the current urban growth area rather than continuing to push outward. Rural lands will be preserved, you know, yada, yada. And so it's all of the things, it's, it's almost the same vision as what we've heard this time. But I like that we, that it's highlighted that it was like, this is the input from the community. So I don't know if there's, maybe it doesn't have to be as elaborate, but I did like that aspect of really kind of giving recognition to the community input as a highlighted, you know, this is what, this is what the community wants.
Yeah, I really appreciate that comment, Julianne. So one, so one thing that we can do, we can do a couple of things is going back to the first page. Under the vision statement, we can kind of present that similarly to how it's in the current one. Because this vision statement is, was, was one of the last things that SCJ, or I shouldn't say that. They, they came in December and worked with you on this vision statement. And so this is from them and it was from your input to them on the vision statement. And it does, it is attempting to kind of consolidate that, the one that's in the current. So if you like that, thank you, Christine. And she pulled it up on her computer so I can look at it. So, so for those of you that don't have it in front of you, it's highlighted like in a color box. And it makes it definitely emphasizes it and stands it out. And we, I think we should do the same on that first page too, where we could say with this vision, the community desires, we can add a couple of bullet points under the vision statement. Like you said, I don't think we want to do it as elaborate, but I do think it does set the tone. It, the very first page of the comprehensive plan. And it does establish that this, in addition, because later on, we'll talk about growth management on the pages we're on right now. But it does establish that first and foremost, this is a comprehensive plan for the people, by the people, you know, following the state rules and for, for the benefit of a future welfare of the city. So I happy to kind of highlight that on that first page.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else on, on that? Okay. So now we are moving on to what essentially is going to be page seven of 11, which kind of goes through shorelines, countywide planning policies and public engagement and involvement. How about this? Anybody have anything on this one?
Right. And I do want to just note on the public participation, participation and engagement that there will be an appendix to the comprehensive plan that will include all of the documents generated throughout the comprehensive plan process that records the public participation and their input and what they've provided to the survey results, the, all the results from the scenarios, the downtown studios, all of that will be included in that appendix.
Okay. I like that too, for, for people that want to, to really do a deep dive. I think that that's, especially because this document is, you know, I mean, this review is, you know, the next one will be what, 10 years from now? Yep. So, okay. All right. Anything else on page seven of 11 in this?
Question or objection? We talk about the county being part of this, but I didn't see anything about the tribe. And I don't know if that's important to include here or not. I mean, they are part of the community, but they're kind of a carve out too, at the same time. They're a government entity in, in and of their own. So.
I really, I appreciate that question, Larry. So the tribe will, we will engage the tribe. So I, I think at this point, I'm not exactly sure how exactly that we're going to, how that's going to look. The Growth Management Act has been amended recently that if the tribe wants to participate in the comprehensive plan, they can ask for a kind of like memorandum of agreement. But what, what really has been happening in other jurisdictions is just an engagement staff to staff to begin with. And so we do intend to do that. It is, it's on the, on the to connect with where. So, and then also I will note that we, I've prepared a couple of sheets that go before this chapter. So like the cover and the table of contents. And the third page is going to be the recitals of your guys' statement that you make at the first meeting or at the beginning of the meeting regarding the tribe. That will be, third page of the comprehensive plan will be that land acknowledgement. And then it will have a citizen reacknowledgement and then. a citizen reacknowledgement, and then table of contents, and then page one here are the introduction chapters. So it will acknowledge at the beginning of the comprehensive plan, the land acknowledgement for the James Towns Clough tribe.
So what I see or experience is, they appear to be a growing presence within the city limits. And they have always been my medical provider, and I think they have a piece of property, you can see out your windows here, right? And so I don't know, as we're talking about this kind of overview, if they need to be in here somewhere, because they are a driver. Yeah, it is. I'm sorry, just too far away. Yeah, so that's just a question. I'm not looking for an answer, a yes or no, but just an observation.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next page, which has bullet points of the public participation plan specified about how the city will engage. What do you guys think about this one? Anything?
Everything Larry just asked for is in there.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the next one that has a graph on it, how the comprehensive plan will be implemented. How about this one? No? Oh, Eileen?
I just wanted to say, I like this word, for amendments, and gives people a timeline, and how, 10 years is a long time. A lot can happen in 10 years. So I like having that explanation there, that we're not going to be sitting, we're not going to knock on your door for 10 years. So I like that. Thanks.
Okay. How about the next page, which talks about the updates to the comprehensive plan, organization of the plan, and the chapters? Anything on that one? No? Okay. I was wondering if the eight chapters, but this might not even be necessary or relevant, but it says the plan consists of eight chapters. The GMA prescribed seven specific chapters that must be contained in the comprehensive plan. Add an additional one, it says required land use, housing, transportation. Do we need to have any kind of a description there? Or no? I mean, I don't feel like I need one, but looking, what do you guys think? Do you think the public needs a small description, or are we good with the amount of information that they've already provided? Yeah. Like a one-sentence description, like land use, and then a one-sentence description. I don't know. As I'm speaking, I'm feeling that it's less irrelevant than it actually is in my head.
I get that.
I'm around the same page.
Doing it all the time. I like fewer words, and I think they're going to get lots of words under each chapter. And you guys do such a good job of explaining that, you know, simple, make it simple. Tell us later.
Okay. So how about the next one that has the remaining of those chapters, plus they start talking about plan interpretation? Anything? Nope. Feels weird. Feels weird that we just got through the whole thing.
Good job.
I read the whole thing, and so I, you know, the things that had come to me, I've brought up. Any, yes, Alex.
The final sentence there, "Any amendment of the comprehensive plan land use map is subject to the annual plan amendment process." So there'll be an annual chance for the community developers, everyone, to weigh in on land use, in other words, zoning. Okay. Is that an ongoing? Is that how it is at present? Oh, I wasn't aware of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
I have an oddball question, and it's grammatical. We're, under the chapters of the comprehensive plan, section one is the plan policy document, section two are the comprehensive plan's appendices. And I'm just wondering, is an "are"? The comprehensive plan is a legal document consisting of, section one is the plan's policy document, and then we go, section two are the comprehensive plan's appendices. It's just a grammatical thing, but it...
That is okay. I will take, you are totally right. In fact, I was looking at it even when we were going on the page, I'm like, that doesn't seem right. So, thank you. I will take grammatical corrections all day long.
I appreciate that, because I actually read that several times.
This is not jeopardy.
I noticed a couple in there, too, as like, oh, I really, I hate the use of that word. I don't know if you guys know this, but I absolutely hate shells. I know that's going to be traumatic for Carla, but it's true. I hate shells. Travis will tell us.
Oh, shells.
We've struck a lot of shells.
We do, and do you know why? Well, because the case law has evolved that shall doesn't mean shall, right? Shall means shall, except for when it doesn't. And the example that I gave people is, shall we dance? It's not a yes or no. It's not a must. It's not a, right? You don't know. It's ambiguous, and there's case law out there to support it, but much to the chagrin of many other code writers and things like that, it dies hard. The state legislature is starting to move away from that as well, so very happy about that, but that's one of my trigger words.
Like saying, please stay off my lawn, instead of just stay off my lawn. Suggestive, not...
Okay, I feel pretty good about the introduction chapter. How about everyone else? Is there anything that Carla, that you feel, you know, that you might want to take a second look at or anything, or, I mean?
No, thank you for asking. No, I think we're good. And also, just to note that this is drafted for today, and while I anticipate that the vision and the things that, especially at the beginning, will stay, this, we have, we will have plenty of other opportunities to revisit this throughout the process to double-check, you know, the vision statement and the, you know, the statements at the beginning about what the vision for the community is, as we get our market study, as we work through the land use map, as we look through the land use and housing chapter. So it's a great start, and it doesn't have to be the last time you look at this. In fact, it won't be, so.
Okay. And I feel like, you know, when we do review something, and we get to a place where we like it, and there has to be a revision, and it comes back to us with the revision, like, highlighted or the color changed, and says, you know, where it can be presented to us as, hey, everything else is the same, but this here is what we changed. We seem to do well with that format.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, I do well with that format, too. So we're going to do this first round, then, over the next couple of months, and then the edits that you've given me tonight will be reflected as a coat, as a color, and so that you'll, when you see it again, you'll say, okay, this is what we did. And then we'll continue to work through that. And then when the public, the full release of the comprehensive plan, the public, you know, the public release, which will be in February or March, then that will get all cleaned up. So we'll kind of have a working draft throughout the rest of this year.
Okay, thank you. And I see that we don't need to do any action, just discussion on this tonight. So anybody have anything else on that before we wrap that up? Yes, Alex?
Do any towns ever put in a little disclaimer? This is our vision, our hope, our dream, and all we can do is provide a framework, guidelines, and opportunities. And it pretty much depends on the economy, investment, and so many other things outside of the city's ability to do itself, for things to come, for this vision to be met and developed.
Yeah, there'll be words to that very effect in the land use chapter.
I wish it weren't like that. That's, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for the work that you've done. I feel really good. I feel better. Not that I felt bad, but I feel better than two weeks ago, and I feel, I feel like we are definitely in a better place than when we had the conversation to change the trajectory. And I feel like, like, you know, you and staff are really honoring our wishes.
Thank you for that, and it's okay to say that you are worried. We knew that. So, you know, I am very direct in that way. You'll find that Carla, I think, appreciates that type of feedback as well. But we, as we said before, we recognize that we need to demonstrate trust, right? We need to earn your trust, and we're ready, willing, and able to do that. And I hope that the work that Carla and Travis have given you tonight have put us well on that path.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, when you presented the summary, and I was reading it, I thought, and I was able to see, you know, where you put, like, nearly complete, or, you know, draft coming, you know, blah, blah, blah. I was like, oh, oh, okay. You know, because for a long time, it was, we didn't really know where anything was. So I liked to know that, you know, even though, like, transportation is not before us right now, but it's being worked on, and this is what's going on. So I appreciate that.
And I take zero credit for this. This is Carla, and to some degree, Travis, and other staff members as well, working on her nights and weekends to bring this and meet this timeframe that we've promised to you. And so my support comes in the form of digging in couch cushions for money and arm wrestling various other directors for that, but I'm happy to do that. But really, the work that you're seeing is these guys here. So, and now we'll have some market with, market data with Leland and things like that. But we really are, we collectively, we are working very hard to bring you a quality, data-driven, comprehensive plan that is reflective of the community, the council, the commission, and staff's vision, so.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to Director's Report.
Well, I think Carla stole most of the thunder in the report in terms of the Leland consulting for the market. But I do want to remind you again that for anyone who's interested, the Habitat for Humanity hearing is May 22 at 10:00 a.m. in this room. There's also a remote option if you're interested in attending. One of the other things that we are working on to assist staff and Carla on the current planning front is we're developing some on-call, what we call on-call contracts, to provide some additional expertise for the department should these master plans come to fruition. While the hearing, while the commission won't be hearing those issues, that is still work that the staff would need to get done. And I share this with you because I don't want you to be concerned that the comprehensive plan is going to fall behind on that. So we are looking at ways to make sure that while we have a lull in our current planning, we're putting steps in place to make sure that we are still able to attend to both things in a professional, timely, and quality manner. And am I missing anything else? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Code updates. We will have, I mean, I've got a draft of Title 17.
Carla had that in her summary.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I have one thing, if that's okay. I kind of just thought of it before the meeting. I've been emailing you all about this training that is totally optional, but just, you need to let me know if you're interested. It's from Jurassic Parliament. I believe her name is Anne. They're really good. I've taken one training from her before. It's Thursday at 10:00 a.m., so I mean, that or hearing examiner, or you can watch it, if you're not available at that time, you can watch it 30 days after the recording. But I do need to know who's interested, no pressure, so that I can get you registered.
Okay. Yeah, if I can watch it later, yes, I'm definitely interested. And also, so, because 10 o'clock is kind of the witching hour for me at work. It's kind of that, I can't really fudge on leaving that early, or, you know, taking a long break. Will that hearing for Habitat for Humanity be available? Will it be recorded?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. All right, anything else for the Director's Report?
But, oh, did you have something, Travis? Okay. Okay, I had two things I thought I would add. One, the first one is, I just wanted to confirm, part of working hard on the comprehensive plan is ensuring that we provide our deliverables to the Washington State Department of Commerce to receive the planning grants. So they're deliverable-based, and so I am, we have completely met the requirements and received the money for the middle housing grant that the city received. We are, I've turned in all the deliverables, but one for the climate planning grant, and so we're on track to get that full funding. And then the planning update grant, which is the one that the comprehensive plan is partially funded by, is, has two deliverables due June 13, so that's what Travis and I are working furiously to make sure we turn in our deliverables to get that. And that's about $63,000 for those grants. So we're on track to receive the grants. And so, that I wanted to, and then the second thing for the, on the current planning side, I just wanted to share that Travis and Ethan and I have recently did a lot of pretty intensive deep dives into the staff report for current planning projects, and to take a look at other jurisdictions, options, and to evaluate the staff report, content, organization, and how it's presented, the format. And we've spent quite a few hours on it, and the Habitat for Humanity staff report prepared by Ethan, or, what's his last name? Walker? Sorry. Was, is kind of our first iteration of that, and it also includes a more robust SEPA analysis that was completed for that project. And so if you're curious, you know, you can take a look on the website or on the portal. It's on the portal, right? But I feel very good about the direction the staff report's going, and I think it's only going to get better. So that has been an intentional effort that Ethan's been leading on the current planning side, and happy to see just raising the bar on the staff report, the content and the format and the presentation for hearing examiner in particular.
And since Carla's opened that door a little bit, you know, because, right, interested in all of the work that we are doing for the department, Travis and Ethan and Emily as well, and Joel will be doing that soon, but they're also working on developing standard operating procedures where none exist, and they're doing a great job, and, you know, to provide that stability and that structure, and to not have the knowledge of what a process is only living in your head. Because we've run into instances where Travis has been sick, and something has had to go out, and people have had to try to wing it, and it's like, why, why are we doing it this way, right? Let's provide some instructions. Let's provide some structure. We're a thin bench, you know, shallow bench. We need to be able to cross-train and have other people step in if needed. So there is a ton of work going on in this department, and huge shout out to Carla, and to Travis, and to Emily, and to Ethan and Joel, even though Ethan and Joel aren't here, but they're all working very, very hard to make... But they're all working very, very hard to make the department and the community development team specifically a, a, you know, shining example of what it could be in the community. They're working very hard and we're all very passionate about it, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to good of the order. I do have something for good of the order. I wanted to give an update on the interviews that we did for the three applicants for our new planning commissioner. So the other day we met and with three, three applicants. And earlier this week, we met and interviewed all three applicants. And I will tell you that each of the three applicants had one aspect that they were very strong in. So there was one applicant that was, that's a long-term resident in Squim and very passionate about development, although his experience with development isn't, you know, one that, of, of what he's done professionally, but he's very invested and passionate about, about the town and he's been here a long time. There was another applicant who hasn't been here for very, for very long. But she has a, she has a master's degree in.
Public health.
Public health. And so she's, she's very familiar with the type of data that we use and to kind of, you know, that guides zoning. She's, in my opinion, not, she's, she's very capable. So her, so that's kind of her, she has aspects that she's very knowledgeable in that would be a benefit to the commission. And we had another candidate who is very strong in, in planning. It's, it's what he has done professionally. And, and he's kind of in the middle as far as like he's not, he's been in the community not as long as the other candidate and not, not as little as the other one. So it's kind of a, each candidate has really strong traits that the commission would benefit from. There were two that really kind of rose up as possible candidates for recommendation out of the three. We had a very robust discussion and there was, there was one candidate that I felt passionate about recommending and the deputy mayor felt passionate about another candidate, both of them good candidates, but we felt like we were not in as much of agreement. And it's definitely not a bad thing. We just feel like maybe there could be just a little bit more discussion before recommendation is made. So that's kind of where we're at. We're looking at possibly a second interview with one or two or all of the candidates to, you know, ask a couple more questions, maybe get a little bit more information, see if, if there's something that, you know, and that we can have a little bit more discussion to see if, if Rachel and I can kind of both have the same recommendation is kind of where we're at. But I will tell you that I am looking forward to any one of those top candidates being on this commission. And I can wholeheartedly tell you that, that we are in a good place with, with the applications. And I, I feel very positive about it. Does anybody, and we'll of course let you know, I mean, I, I can't imagine that this would, that we wouldn't have a recommendation, you know, at, at the latest by the next meeting. I feel like we can have a resolution before that. Does anybody have any questions at all? Okay, cool. But that's all I have for good of the order. Does anybody else have anything for good of the order? Yes, Larry.
I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if Travis, if you're aware that the Mariners' outlook, phase three went, went for sale. It's up for sale. So whatever was going to be developed there may be on hold now.
Yes, Eileen.
I'm just feeling like this is a very good news meeting and we all deserve one. And it's thanks to everybody doing their part to make it like this. So let's kind of keep on doing it.
I like that plan. Okay. Oh, and I just want to say that I did in honor of Jeff, I did bring my comprehensive plan tonight, since we were doing the introduction. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor for adjournment, please raise your hand. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 7:06 PM.